Good afternoon. I have a...
...progress.
They always do that to me. I have a couple of announcements before we get going. First of all, with signs, anyone that has a sign, can you take them to the very back? We want to make sure that everybody is seen and heard and not distracted by signs. If you would, please, I'd appreciate that. And you can have them, but please don't wave them around or be distracted with them. All right, very good. First off, I do have a Brown Act announcement. We have a request from Councilmember Eric Friedman to allow his remote participation in the meeting pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 due to emergency circumstances caused by a medical emergency that prevents the council member from attending in person. Mr. Friedman, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Well, welcome back. Is there anyone in the room with you that's over the age of 18?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation...
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There can beeman through on that Pledge of Allegiance, didn't he? Very good. May we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Harmon?
Here.
Councilmember Santa Maria? Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Present.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Mayor Rouse?
Here.
And we have a ceremonial item to read.
Item two, National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Mayor?
It's National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 11th through 17th, 2025. Whereas in 1963, the United States Congress and President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th at Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And as such, the Santa Barbara Police Department will celebrate the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers take an oath to serve with integrity and courage, often placing themselves in harm's way to ensure the safety and security of others despite the numerous challenges they face. And whereas the dedicated members of the Santa Barbara Police Department play a critical role in protecting residents' rights and well-being with compassion, care, and professionalism. And whereas National Police Week serves as an opportunity for communities to recognize law enforcement dedication and remember fallen officers while expressing deep gratitude to officers and their families. And whereas strong partnerships and open communication between law enforcement and the community are critical elements for developing mutual trust and public safety while securing shared commitments to justice and respect for all individuals. Now therefore, I, Randy Rouse, as the mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day in memory of law enforcement officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and to honor law enforcement officers presently serving in the community. Congratulations, Chief.
So, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Just want to make a couple of brief comments. You know, this is an opportunity, yes, we do this every year, but I think it's really important to recognize just some statistics from last year and also looking forward. So, in 2024, 147 officers lost their lives in the line of duty nationally. That's actually up 25% from the prior year. So unfortunately, it's going up and not down. But beyond those tragic events, what I really want to highlight this year and talk about, you know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And something that's not in that statistic that I just shared, I also consider these line of duty deaths, is that, and these are something that's really underreported, is that there were at least 184 public safety officers that died by suicide in 2024. And that is really hard to calculate, but there's an organization called First Help that's been a nonprofit trying to track that. So, you know, I just want to recognize that fact. Officers are exposed to a great deal of trauma. You know, here in Santa Barbara, we recognize that and really have tried to grow our wellness programs and the things that we do and, you know, not for it to be taboo to get mental health help. But when we talk about May being mental health awareness, it actually, the timing of it in combination with this, is just something I really want to highlight and recognize this year because I don't think it's talked about enough. And although we're doing a better job of talking about it, it's something that we can need to continue to work on. So, you know, I, as the chief in our department, are committed to supporting our officers and their families because the families are also a really important piece of this. We want to recognize the challenges that they face, that all the officers face every day, as well as our professional staff and what they're exposed to as well, being part of our organization. And we really want to make sure we're providing the resources and support to ensure the well-being of each of them as well as our community. So, today, I just want to honor the commitment of our current police officers as we honor the fallen and renew that commitment to making sure that we provide for the safety and mental health of those who continue to serve in our community. So with that, I just want to say thank you and I want to recognize the back of the room that came to join, you know, we know we always sit in the back of the room, but just to recognize the service that you see in the officers. And I would encourage everyone, as you see an officer, take a moment to say thank you and have that interaction because it's something that we appreciate and like to have that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Rouse, we would like to move the council and staff communications up to right after general public comment.
Okay, very good. And with that, prior to get to the consent calendar, I'd like to make a brief announcement being there's a lot of interest in a particular item today, as we can tell, a lot of speakers. So I'm going to ask, we're going to have to limit the speaking to a minute per speaker. However, you can combine with other speakers to speak up to five minutes, but if you are donating your time to a speaker, you must be in the room when that speaker is called on. And we will go until 2:20 to accept new speaker slips or to have hands raised online. There's a number of folks online as well. Okay, so 2:20 be the cutoff for new additional speakers. And with that, we'll go to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, you have some items to read.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item three, minutes, recommendation that council waive reading and approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 29th, 2025, and for the special meeting of April 29th, 2025. Item four, amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code SBMC by adding Section 17.12.200 relating to vessel insurance requirements and Section 17.12.210 relating to process enforcement and ability to appeal. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code SBMC by adding Section 17.12.200 relating to vessel insurance requirements and Section 17.12.210 relating to process enforcement and ability to appeal. Item five, revised lease agreement and sublease agreement for office space for the Sustainability and Resilience Department at 801 Garden Street. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Sustainability and Resilience Director to execute a first amendment to lease agreement number 28,226 with FBK investments for the property located at 801 Garden Street, Suites 200 and 201, commencing upon the effective date of the first amendment, July 1, 2025. Item six, set a date for public hearing regarding Architectural Board of Review's approval for 418 North Milbus Street and 915-923 East Gutierrez Street.
All right, thank you very much. I have a request on item six. Are there any other items that anybody on council needs to pull for discussion or a separate vote? All right, very good.
Mr. Mayor, I just need to vote separately on item three. I believe it was read. It's just...
Ah, yes, thank you. Okay, so item three as well. And those have both been read into the record? That's a good question. I'll ask our parliamentarian. Ms. Connect, do we have to vote on item one to approve Mr. Friedman's remote participation?
No, Mr. Mayor, you do not.
Thank you very much. Okay. It's just how complicated we can make this today, shall we? Okay, and with that, we will have a report from the Ordinance Committee, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Today, we heard updates to the sign ordinance and with a 2-1 vote, approved it moving forward to council.
All right, very good. So with that, I am going to, we're going to do something a little unusual today because I have, we have moved the item from our reports to engagement for administration to public comment, and I will start out with a statement from our attorney, Ms. Connect.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe we were going to have public comment first before the city administrator's comments.
Okay, I'm going to take about a two-second sidebar here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will make my introductory statement now before we have public comment, general public comment. And so, and that will be followed by a statement by the city administrator who's calling in remotely today. So I just wanted to indicate that that's, this is a little bit out of the ordinary for us to have a comment from the city administrator, and it does not expand the scope of general public comment or open the floor for discussion on the particular item that she's going to be speaking about. So I wanted to make that clear, that staff is neither here today nor present to discuss that, so, and it's not an agenda item, so we won't be engaging in further discussion on that topic. But we will have general public comment. City administrator will make a comment, and it will be limited to that.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. At this point, I'd like to call on Ms. Magadou to make a comment.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor and council, and I apologize for not being there in person today and dealing with a personal issue and so not at the meeting this afternoon. So I know there's a number of members of the public who are there today to speak about all the city's red tagging of the former Plaza de la Raza building, and I wanted to just share a couple of comments about where we are this afternoon and what we know as of right now. And I want to highlight that the red tagging of the building was done as a result of serious life safety concerns that came to the city's attention during an inspection last week when we walked through with realtors who are representing the building in a bankruptcy auction. We are finalizing the notice of violations from that inspection and will serve this to the property owner. The property owner will then have 30 days to begin and actively pursue compliance and correction of violations to hopefully allow people to reoccupy the building. I want to emphasize that the private property owner is responsible for the repairs to the building. The building department and with fire department assistance will help to answer questions and work with the owners to bring the building back into compliance for occupancy. I do recognize how important the services are that are being provided to vulnerable members of our community from the building, and we are committed to continuing to work with our community partners to make sure we understand who is currently operating in the building and what options there are for potential relocation. However, I do want to make it clear that, as, you know, I was in the Bay Area and witnessed the aftermath of the Oakland Goshen warehouse fire. Now that the city is aware of the dangers in the building, we cannot legally or ethically allow events to multiple people in the building until the life safety issues are addressed. I recognize the item's not agendized today, but I did want to make sure that members of the public know that my office is available to answer questions and to engage in further dialogue, and I just wanted to share those comments today. Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Magadou, and I, and thank you for your understanding with the public today. We're doing things a little bit unusually, but we realize what this, the issue is and why everybody's here to speak. And with that, I'm going to ask that we refrain from cheering or booing or clapping or anything. We want to hear from everybody. We have to go to a minute, like I said, just because we have a lot of speakers here and a lot of speakers online. So as I call you up, I'm going to call you up and the person right behind you, the person on deck, to speak, if we can move through this because we do want to hear from everybody. All right? Madam Clerk, would you put the timer on for one minute, please?
And, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that we do need to go back and vote on the consent calendar items, but if you want to take public comment before you go to that...
Well, that's how it's agendized, but we, it may make more sense to do that. As a parliamentarian, do we have a...
You can, you can do that. You can move the order agenda, so that's fine.
We could do that. And so, because we do have substantial public comment, that make more sense? Does that work with my colleagues up here? Okay, very good. Then let's just do that. First of all, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to approve everything except items three and item six on the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Make for Oscar Terrace motion, second by Councilmember Sneddon. May we have the vote, please?
And they need to be roll call votes today.
A roll call vote because of the remote attendance. Thank you.
We'll start with Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Rouse?
Hi. Okay, very good. We'll take a motion on item three on the minutes. Ah, who am I sitting? Thank you. Second, Mayor Harmon. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedman?
Epstein.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Rouse?
Hi. And then we'll move on to item six, please.
Was there a public comment on item six or no?
Oh, I'm sorry, we had a public comment, that's right. Skipping ahead of myself. So I have two speakers on item six. May I start with Jose Gallos? And you have three minutes at the dais on this. Be followed by Natasha Todorovic.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm going to be reading here Charter City Rights, and this is about developers developing these high-rise, whatever you want to call it, apartment units, AUDs, and so forth. So, here we go. I am here today to remind you that cities like Redondo Beach, Torrance, Carson, Wood Ear...
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt the speaker and just remind, we're only discussing setting the date for the public hearing on the appeal today, not the merits of the appeal.
I thought it was going to be a public comments right now.
Public comment on, on the topic of setting the date to hear the appeal, and that's it. Because we don't have all parties here, it's not appropriate to consider issues on the appeal itself. So if you could just tailor your comments, if you have a comment about the fact that the council's going to act to set the, set the hearing on the appeal for August 5th, if you have a comment with regard to that, it would be appropriate. And then, then obviously, when we do come back for the appeal, you're more than welcome to return and make your full comments.
Okay, so this is right now, item six, correct?
Yes. That, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to say about that, it'd be more appropriate to change the date from August 5th to sometime in September after Labor Day weekend because a lot of people take vacation time during the month of August. So please take that into consideration, that sometime in September for the appeal for this, you know, for item six here, to be changed for September after Labor Day weekend. Because a lot of folks, you know, they still like to take their vacation, you know, during the month of August. And that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Todorovic, please.
Thank you. Just a request to move the date just slightly, please. Unlike most people that are involved in this, the, I'm not paid to be here, and I'm not paid to do this appeal. So on that specific date, I'm working with clients. My first Tuesdays and my third Tuesdays are generally occupied with clients. This has been taking so long anyway. It started back in 2018. Another couple of weeks won't make a big difference, so please move it a couple of weeks. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, very good. Are there any public comments on line four, item six?
We do have one hand raised. Michael Lynch, if you would unmute and let us know what you want to speak on?
Say that Michael Lynch has...
He no longer has his hand raised. Oh, is he? They've left the meeting entirely.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And with that, then I will now close the comment on item six and entertain a motion. Move by Jordan?
Well, I was, I was going to move, if there is no objection, that we discuss moving the date later since the appellant was requesting a change of the date.
I think you could discuss that now, if you would like. And, and I could just perhaps state that August 5th is the date that is suggested by staff because it's a significant caseload, a significant workload to prepare for this appeal. They're available, but that, but that is why the staff put it that. I'm not quite clear of the date that the appellant is requesting, though. I think...
Any second for the fourth, fifth Tuesday would work.
Maybe clarify if she's asking for that after August 5th or the...
I believe that would be after August 5th, any second, fifth, or...
Yes, after August 5th, any Tuesday that is a second, a fourth, or a fifth Tuesday. I would sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
And also, if I could just add that the applicant, although aware of this meeting, you know, has agreed to, they, they, I'm not sure what date the applicant would, would prefer on this.
And Councilmember Sneddon and Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the applicant, I believe, was looking for an earlier date, so we had vetted an earlier date. We have not vetted any dates after the August 5th date with, with staff and with the parties.
Oh, okay. So I, it seems in the, in the past, sometimes we've adjusted dates, but this does not sound like one of those circumstances. So I, I won't second the motion, but I...
Okay, well, we have a couple of other comments, so, Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. For the appellant, just a brief question, I'm so sorry, I know you were going to leave. Were you requesting a second, fourth, or fifth Tuesday after Labor Day? Would that work? Because I know another public comments are asked after Labor Day.
After August 5th.
So anytime after August 5th, okay. Thank you, that, that is all.
Okay.
So my, my only question to staff is, would we be able, or, you know, for us as council to make a motion to have staff vet other options? So I know that you vetted the dates before August 5th, but if you, I know, I understand if we can't say a date right now, but if we could at least make the motion to have staff look at dates after Labor Day for the second, fourth, or fifth Tuesdays?
I, I think that'd be appropriate, and I would also ask, though, that that come back once staff has done that work, to come, bring it back to council so they can approve that date.
Absolutely. And I think in that process, of course, feel, please loop in the...
Applicant.
Thank you. Blanked on the word. Yes, on the applicant, and then hopefully we can find a date that works for everybody.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Sarah, we vetted everything up until August 5th, and August 5th was the best date for staff to be prepared. Is that what you said? The earliest date for staff to be prepared.
I'll defer to the clerk for that. They're the ones that were communicating on this.
Yes, Councilmember Jordan and Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I, my, I mean, I'm okay with August 5th, but I also think we shouldn't just mess up somebody who's filed an appeal, and so if the second Tuesday of a month would work, I'd change my motion to August 12th. That shouldn't have to be vetted by staff because they've already vetted through the week before. They should, they should enjoy another week. But anything after that, I think, just puts an unfair burden on the applicant. That's already four months away of waiting time for the applicant.
And, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Jordan, Mr. Friedman has his hand up, so I'd like to...
Oh, Mr. Friedman, go ahead, please.
also.
Oh, Mr. Freeman, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just wanted... I concur with Councilmember Santa Maria. I think the appropriate course of action right now would be to continue this to perhaps even next week, and give staff the time to confer with the appellant and the applicant on a time, on a date that would work mutually for both of them. So I'd be in support of... I essentially think that's what she was saying, and I agree with that. We just continue the item and allow staff to work with both of them, and then bring it back. We could probably even bring it back next week to set the date.
All right, very good. Mr. Ireland, do you think it's practical that staff could come with an answer by next week?
Mayor Rouse, yes, absolutely. We can...
Okay, because I really hate to sit around and pick dates when the city administrator has to determine the load on the calendar of any particular day, particularly if it's an appeal. So, yeah, very good.
Just withdraw that motion, then. Okay?
Okay. And can I have a new motion? Ms. Santa Maria?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I would like to make the motion to direct staff to go back and speak with the applicant and the appellant to find a date that would work mutually for both parties, setting it ideally for sometime after Labor Day on a second, fourth, or fifth Tuesday.
Okay. First by Santa Maria, second by Sneddon. My only caveat is, is that the fifth is still in play if that's the one that works and it doesn't otherwise. Is that enough time going out, if we decide next week?
Mayor Rouse, if August 5th ends up being the date that works best for everyone, then yes, we can still do that with the continuing...
Okay, that's my only caveat, because I'm not going to try to play city administrator here. I want them to be able to schedule this so it works for staff and for both applicant and appellant as much as humanly possible. So, let me see if I understand the motion. Madam Clerk, can you read that back to us, please?
So, motion by Councilmember Santa Maria, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, for staff to speak with the applicant and appellant to find a date that works for everyone, second, fourth, or fifth Tuesday after Labor Day, and bring that back to council for approval.
Yeah, I can't support that because it precludes the August 5th date. It's already been scheduled after delays on this for the applicant in the first place. So I'm going to go back to the maker of the motion. If we can just have staff come back with an answer for us, please, without specifics.
Yes, I'll amend the motion to say with a second, fourth, or fifth Tuesday after August 5th. Does that work?
No, I'm saying August 5th needs to still be in play.
Oh, so maybe we can amend it to say including August 5th. Is that okay?
Yeah, just to confer with both parties and see what works. Because, like I said, I do not want to jump into whatever the administrator's office has in terms of scheduling goes.
Absolutely, makes sense. So, yeah, if I can amend it to add a Tuesday after Labor Day and including August 5th, and confer with both parties and ensure that that works for everybody.
Yeah, okay.
I'll join in supporting that, but I'm just saying, when you look at the August schedule, my worry is we're being gamed here, because there are no other dates that meet the appellant's criteria in the month of August other than the 12th, one day. Okay? Because we're off and there's a holiday.
And it may not meet the applicant's criteria either.
Well, that might be true, too, but...
We've already delayed the project, so that's why I don't want to get too specific.
If this is just an attempt to push it off a month, and now make the applicant wait five months and carry that, I just have a hard time with it, but just see the results, and I won't stand in the way with this.
All right, thank you very much. Do we understand what we just got moved and seconded? I think so. Does everybody understand what we're doing here, the motion? Maybe just go ahead and have the roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Santa Maria?
Yes.
Mayor Rouse?
Hi. Okay, very good. And that completes the consent calendar. Well, with that, we'll go to a report from the Ordinance Committee and then Chair. Did you already do that?
I did.
I did. We were having so much fun, I forgot all that stuff. Okay. We're going to move now to our general public comment. And once again, it's one minute per. I'm going to ask that speakers come up as they're called, and that the speaker behind them be ready to come up and speak, so we can make sure we hear from everyone. And we'll start out with Pastor Jerry Manchaca. Now she'll be followed by Oliver Banalis Vallejo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to come here. I'm here on behalf of those that cannot be here today. I'm here to voice for those that have the ability to voice for themselves, not that because of legality, because they work, because they're out there providing a living for their family. The Casa de la Raza has a history of helping those in our community, and especially marginalized people and people of color. My family has lived here for 10 generations, and my mother was one of the original people at the Casa de la Raza, and I grew up there as a child, working and helping community. It's a tragedy what has happened, and just approximately two years ago, it was inspected, and nothing was given to us, saying that we needed to do certain things, or given a timeline to work within, but come up to a red tag, and I'm asking for help. And where do I come to help? I come to you guys. You represent us. We need help, and we need it now.
Thank you very much. Oliver Banalis Vallejo, followed by Colleen Kelly.
Good afternoon, Honorable City Council and Mayor. My name is Oliver Banalis Vallejo. I'm a condor, a don, a gaucho, but most importantly, a product of the community of Santa Barbara. A community that has been influenced by various Latino leaders, such as my grandfather, Frank Banalis, who's operated one of the most successful nonprofits in California, and my late grandfather, Armando Vallejo, who led the artistic revolution at La Casa de la Raza when it first began. That's why we're here today, to acknowledge how important the building of La Casa de la Raza has played for not just my family, but families of Santa Barbara. Being a safe haven to practice and explore cultural identity and proudly promote oneself is just some of the various reasons why many are attached to this building. And of course, we must acknowledge the malpractice of leadership that has happened from it. The City of Santa Barbara designated La Casa de la Raza for its historic acknowledgement in 2020, as proven to be a great ally in trying to assist the various programs within the building for the grand spectrum of time of the conception of the cultural center. That is why I'm here today to ask the City of Santa Barbara to heavily consider the purchasing and restoration of the cultural center upon clearing litigation and eventual sale of the building. That is why we need to promote cultural identity.
Thank you. Colleen Kelly, followed by Jacquelineinda.
I'm Colleen Kelly. I've lived here my entire adult life, and I want to thank council people for allowing us to speak today. As the mother of two adult, half Hispanic children, I made sure that they had their cultural nutrition the entire time they grew up, and La Casa de la Raza was a huge part of that. They had big ofrendas, they had big festivals. I brought my kids to all of those things. And even prior to that, back in the 70s, I belonged to a food-buying co-op that La Casa was our drop-off point for bulk items for our food orders, which later became the Milpus Food Co-op. But I just wanted to encourage the City Council to help La Casa thrive, because it's an important part of the community, it's an important part of the cultural identity of this city. And it's... Thank you.
Thank you. Jacquelineinda, followed by Chris Barros.
I don't have my time, sir. Go.
Okay, hang on just one second here, Jeff. All right, very good. You have two minutes. Oh, okay. And your name?
Eric Bossar.
Hang on here. I'm sorry, Eric, your last name again was?
Bossar, Pius, Boy, Willby.
Thank you. There you are.
And she can get up to five minutes, you said?
Okay.
Tanya Love, I don't...
I'm sorry, what is the name?
Did you say she can have up to five minutes donated? Tanya Love, oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay. There's Tanya, and Jennifer Hernandez. Sanchez. And there you are. Okay. Ms. Inda, you have five minutes.
Yay.
You set the timer to five minutes, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, Council, I appreciate the time that I have, and the folks who have waived their time to be able to speak to you today. I'm here at public comment because we're not on agenda, on a very serious issue. I have worked for the International Red Cross and the local Red Cross. More than 11 years I worked there when my kids were small. I was an instructor/trainer for professional rescue, so I understand safety. I also went out to responses in Katrina and other places throughout the United States, providing my bilingual skills in those kinds of responses. I know the impact of community. I come to you today because there are many things the city can do. Not with regard to the red tag, I understand that there will be a list that our community will have to step up to to fix. But guess what? Because I'm a part of the Hispanic Chamber, and because of the work that we've done, the sheer work that we've done within the building in the last 24 months and before that, I can tell you, we can step up to that challenge, and very quickly. It's not the resource that we need. It's the guidance so that we do it right. It's the opportunity to do it swiftly, and it's the partnership moving forward. And the partnership means that there are different ways to explore working together. I understand that you might consider, well, this is a private building. The reality is, I have worked very closely with all kinds of different projects and bonds that we've passed in order to purchase buildings. We need to work on that for the future of this building. Wouldn't it be great if there was an entity like our city who owned one of the only historically preserved buildings in the state that could continue its legacy for decades to come? I know that there is a lot of work to be done inside of the building. But we have to work right now to remove those red tags so that activities can continue to thrive. There are many questions that I have, many questions that people have. And I know that as people using the space, we may not have direct access, so it might feel like we are not given the information as quickly as maybe an owner would. But I know our city is trying very hard to work with our needs right now. And I know that because Ms. Barbara Anderson was answering my phone calls all weekend long while she was home. I know that there is value and interest in supporting us. What I don't want to do is get into the point in the conversation where it's a city against a community, because that's not the case here. I don't want to get into the conversation of, well, what's going on in there, and how... Well, this is confusing for us, because that doesn't help either. That dissuades the conversation to different directions when we have one focus in front of us. The focus in front of us is to remove those red tags, to make it accessible, maybe not all the way, but maybe there's portions of the space that can be used in the meantime, while extensive renovations happen within the building. The city didn't red-tag all of the building. It didn't red-tag the point in which the actual building ends in a point. That allowed for the auto mechanic shop to be functional. So I ask, why not allow us to use the open spaces until we finish the 30-day mark? I also ask, if there were gas issues, wouldn't there be a policy that the city might turn off the gas so that it wouldn't impact if the building blew up now that it's not being accessed or opened? So I ask about policy. I ask about transparency. More importantly, rather than all of those questions, I ask for partnership on behalf of the community that desperately needs it, not right now, not for me, but for 50 years from now, when hopefully I'm not doing this, and we're not doing this, but there's a whole bunch of other people who are doing this for our community. I thank you for your time, and I think everybody's for their times, and I just want to give everybody a round of applause for being here in such short notice.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Barros? Back to one minute, please. It should be followed by John Michael Huerta.
Good afternoon, Councilmember, and Mr. Mayor. I'm here today to express my deep concern for the Casa de la Raza, its building, operations, services, and rich history it represents. I respectfully urge you to explore all possible avenues to preserve this invaluable and essential community treasure. In addition to the heartfelt sentiments already shared, I ask that we call on our local community of members, of contractors, electricians, plumbers, structural engineers, handy persons, and philanthropists to come together and support by donating their time and services and resources. By addressing the current health and safety issues, we can work collectively toward reopening the Casa de la Raza as soon as possible, and ensuring that it continues to serve our community for generations to come. Thank you for your concern.
John Michael Huerta, followed by Larry Berent.
Greetings, Mayor and Council, attendees. May the good Lord bless and protect us all in Jesus's name. Amen. I come before the Council and attendees, Mayor as well, just to speak of the importance of preserving the Casa de la Raza for vulnerable people, people that are not able to drive, limited income, limited residencies, unsheltered, undocumented, and more. And more so for the younger generation. We need a place to gather, an incubator of safe ideas, a neutral place where people could come from all areas, you know? It's very important to have cultural identity, but it's very important to have inclusion. And with that center, all those things and ideas are fostered. It's called Casa de la Raza, but it's more so for the human race. As world citizens, speaking for myself, I just stress the importance of arts, community involvement, healthy places for all. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Larry Berent, followed by Cooper, and I can't quite make out the last name, so we'll hope there's just one Cooper in the room.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Larry Berent. I live in District Six, part of the Steering Committee for Indivisible Santa Barbara. Unlike just about everybody who's spoken, I have not lived here all my life. I moved here less than two years ago. You'd be surprised, this isn't the friendliest town in the world to move to. There is no Casa in this town, no space in this town, that welcomed me as warmly, as unconditionally, as Casa de la Raza has. Why? You'd have to ask them. Beyond me. The only writing the city has provided so far is its press release. In the press release, the city promised immediate action to minimize disruption to the community, to ensure uninterrupted provision of services formerly performed at La Casa. That's where we should be going. Let's go there. Let's make it happen. We could do this together.
Thank you. Cooper, followed by Jose Arturo Gallegos.
Good afternoon, councilors and mayor. I am here as a member of a subset of a subset of a subset of the people that depend on the general experience of La Casa de la Raza and all that it provides, particularly in regards to live music. As a non-native, and basically as, from the perspective of an outsider here, as a student at the University of California, Santa Barbara, I wish that the city would give this place the exact same chance, in all honesty and transparency, that this place has given me many other people within my age demographic of young adult to late teens, of creating and celebrating the act of creation and live music. I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Adelaide Ortega, followed by Catherine Carmichael.
My name is Adelaide Robles Ortega, and I grew up at the Casa de la Raza. My father was Reginald Robles. He was one of the first to get started with Tommy Costello, and we had the best times there. We got to know all our other families that we didn't know we had, and it's very important right now to keep it for the community, because there are so many seniors who have nowhere else to go. And I think the Casa de la Raza provides things like that, so that we can all meet each other and see each other. And, you know, it's hard for seniors to get around, so it is an important... And it is, right now, I think it is a beautiful place. May need a little work, a little touch-up, just like the rest of us, but I think we can work at it together and see what we can do. It's very important to keep it in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Catherine Carmichael, followed by Larissa Nkada.
Hello to esteemed Mayor, Council, and also staff.
Hello to esteemed mayor, council, and also staff. I know you guys work very hard. My name is Catherine Carmichael. I am not a local, although one day I hope to be. I've only lived in the South Coast since 2018, but it doesn't take that much time to see how important Casa is. I am an incoming MA and PhD student at UCSB in the comm. department, specifically focusing on environmental and political communication. And institutions like Casa are essential for my education, even though I don't study, you know, environmental and political communication, what does it have to do? A huge part of my research is community-based work. And one of the main reasons why I decided to stay at my alma mater, UCSB, to get my masters and PhD, which is very weird to do all three at the same place, and they recommend you don't do that, but the reason why I did is because there is no better place for me to study the community than Santa Barbara. And it's because of institutions like Casa that made me come back to UCSB and stay in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Sincada, followed by Sandra De Salazar.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I represent, my name is Maria Sincada. I represent Brascals, Santa Barbara's one and only community street brass band. We have the broad spectrum of humanity, ages 21 to 88, somebody with Parkinson's, a blind person, people from Africa, Latin America, we have everybody. We're basically positive proof that music brings people together. And so we strongly stand behind the mission of Casa de la Raza, to bring people together and especially to provide a space for marginalized communities, which our country needs more than ever now due to the current administration and just the divisiveness that has taken hold in culture lately. So, oh, time goes fast. I just, I'm going to go off script. I'm going to say, I approached Jackie to get a rehearsal space two years ago, and I said, I'm so sorry, we're not all Latino. And she said, hey, Casa, Casa de la Raza, La Raza isn't necessarily just Latino, it's people in general, and we will provide you a space. And I'm so grateful. We stand behind Casa, and we want to keep the doors open. So, thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Casa.
Sandra De Salazar, followed by Cesar Peralta.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Sandra De Salazar, and I'm Coca Native American. And I'm here to support Casa de la Raza. Casa de la Raza has been a safe and inclusive place, and I believe one of the few places where a brown American community can gather and not feel discriminated or profiled. Casa is where our community can gather to celebrate their Native American culture and cultures, and I say cultures, meaning Mexicans, Salvadorans, Guatemalans, and more. Let's not forget that meanwhile, we welcome immigrants from other places. We should not forget that we are in Native lands. Casa is and will be a safest place for, a safest place, a safe place for Native Americans and other immigrants. All are welcome to join Casa, mi casa es su casa.
Thank you. Cesar Peralta, followed by Miguel Avila. Daisy? No signs, no thongs.
Hi, my name is Cesar Peralta. I've been in Santa Barbara resident all my life. As recently, I've been arrested, charged 40 days with false arrest without any proper representation, and I feel it's been like that because there isn't enough variety amongst the city leaders and representatives. My whole courtroom was of a white ethnicity. My public defender was also. I did have evidence, it was never introduced. I do have a poster behind. I was injured with a separated shoulder, AC joint, and a winged scapula caused by Dr. Proctor. It was covered up by Dr. Romero, and ultimately I got arrested and held accountable. I haven't been able to see my daughter because I do have visitation and payment obligations, but as of last month, or as of last year, the risk management team gave me $12,500 for a debt that was $36,000 caused by Dr. Proctor and Romero. And therefore, I need Casa de la Raza to be up and running for people like me who are of a minority descent, and I, you know, that's all.
Thank you. Miguel Avila, followed by Natasha Todorowick.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Miguel Avila. I'm president of the Greater Santa Barbara Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and I'm involved in a number of nonprofits, very active. My affiliation with La Casa goes back to 1973, when I was a young, 15, almost turning 16-year-old teenager, and basically the only place that I considered that was safe for us young adults was La Casa or the West Side or the East Side Boys and Girls Club. But anyway, my comment here is as a professional. I am a professional real estate agent, Realtor, specializing in commercial, residential, and the sale of businesses. And I personally do not approve the way it happened. It reminds me how the association took the city to court and with their zoning inspections, basically the same inconsistency that I see happening last Friday is what happened back then, and that's why that zoning inspection report does not exist any longer. So I urge you to please work with La Casa de la Raza and get this building open as soon as possible. Whatever needs to be red-tagged, fine, we'll fix it. Whatever, I am part of the committee of La Casa, so please. Thank you.
Natasha Todorowick.
So on a completely different issue, I was super impressed by the generosity of the city in the budget negotiations. Kind of blew me away. And Mayor Rouse, you said something that was really profound. I don't think people really caught it, but you were talking about the institutional investors. And back in July 2018, I was at the Alliance for Mergers and Acquisitions Advisors in Chicago, and I was on the international committee, and they use words like dry powder, deal volume, record capital. There's more money now in the system than ever before. They talk about managed funds and pooling investing and all of that, all very boring kinds of words. But one of the things that they do is they'll go and they'll evaluate like about 1,000 different businesses in a year, and out of those 1,000 businesses, they'll find seven that are actually worth picking up. And they pick up young graduates from Ivy League schools, and they tell them they're going to be involved in mergers and acquisitions. And property is the biggest thing that is most lucrative for them to buy. They are here now. Please also help Casa de la Raza.
Thank you. Speakers online, Madam Clerk.
We have one hand raised. Michael Lynch no longer has their hand raised. There are no further speakers online.
Put their hand down. That's it? Okay, very good. All right, with that, that concludes public comment. Thank you. We're going to move to the councilmember committee assignment and engagements as we move that to this part of the agenda. So, start out with Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I'm very thankful for everyone showing up and sharing your opinions about this situation. We all care about La Casa as well, and we're going to do our best to see what we can do to help. So I appreciate you all, and I appreciate your patience and support. Yeah, that's all I got to say for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ned.
Thank you. I'll actually comment on that as well, that many of us were instrumental in designating the Casa as historic landmark. We believe in the Casa and the very important work over decades that is essential, especially right now. We need latitude to be able to look at this. So, but my engagements, Historic Landmarks Committee looked at outdoor dining, H. Thomas Gary Awards, attended those, incredible stories of valor on this. I did attend the Mission Canyon Association meeting. Kachuma Conservation Release Board held a special meeting, closed session. Community History Day, another reminder of how much community and variety and community and diversity in community we have in Santa Barbara, all to be celebrated. Happy Mother's Day to my mom, and attended the Riviera Board Association meeting, and that's all.
Ms. Hannah Rhea.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I have no engagements to report from this last week, but I want to make sure that I comment on, or public comment. Truly, I can't thank you all enough for being here. I know that the folks that are asking for help is tripled, quadrupled the number that is in here. I know that this goes way beyond. We have gotten the emails. We hear you loud and clear. This historic landmark is in my district. You can take this with you to the bank, hear me now. I will do everything I can to work with our staff to look for solutions. I can't promise you a specific solution, but what I can promise you is that I will work diligently with our staff to explore every possible avenue. I stand with our community in ensuring that this space is...
Mr. Mayor, I hate to cut off the councilwoman, but we need to really limit our comments here. This is really councilmember engagements. So, you know, we're kind of taking liberty by allowing statements, but, you know, we need to really keep it limited.
Okay. Thanks. I will wrap it up by saying, although this is a complicated situation, the important thing is to keep a resource alive for the community, whether it's at that location, whether it's at another, but the resource is important, and you have my commitment on helping keep a resource alive. That's it.
All right, very good. If there are no further comments or engagements by council, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you all very much. With that, Madam Clerk, would you read the next item onto the record, please?
Item 7, Overview of City Programs That Build Community Capacity for Sustainable Actions.
Thank you. And we'll give it just a minute to kind of let the crowd thin out a little bit. Hey, Ms. Parento, if you just give us just a minute or two, we'll... All right, whenever you're prepared, we'll go ahead with this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, councilmembers. My name is Alelia Parento. I'm your Sustainability and Resilience Director, and thrilled to be bringing this item to you today. This is an overview of all of the programs the city offers to the community to facilitate sustainable actions. This item went to the Sustainability Committee, and they requested we bring it before you today. As you're aware, in July of last year, your council adopted the city's Climate Action Plan update, which acknowledged that without the community's participation, we cannot achieve your ambitious goals, and it even included a community potential section. Today's presentation talks about some of those programs that were outlined in the Climate Action Plan and beyond. It also acknowledges that this work happens throughout this organization, not just in your sustainability department. And as you'll see today, we have a large number of work groups that will be presenting all of the amazing work happening in the city. This shows that sustainability is in the city's DNA, and that it is a very important council priority. So with that, we'll start with the library.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Paige Sonstrom, and I'm an adult programming librarian at Santa Barbara Public Library. I am also the program and grant lead for the Sustainable California Libraries Grant that we have been awarded for the last two fiscal years. The Sustainable California Libraries Grant is a Library Services and Technology Act that is funded through the California State Library and, which is funded by the IMLS. The purpose of this grant is to fund services, programming, and educational opportunities focused on sustainability and climate resilience. Like I said, this is our second year of funding for this grant, so a lot of the programs and services that we have been developing with our community partners are in response to the surveys and observations and conversations that we've had with attendees to our programs in the last year. Many of the responses we received from program attendees are that folks are really interested in learning how to elevate or extend their sustainable lifestyles, including how to sew and mend their own clothes, how to start their own garden, and more, which I will be highlighting a few of those programs in this presentation. My favorite part about being an adult programming librarian is the amount of community partners that I get to work with throughout the weeks, months, and years. And having this grant has meant that we are able to fund programs and also pay local experts and artists and educators who are able to teach our community members on a variety of topics. Next slide, please. So, like I said, the main information that folks in our community are interested in learning about is sewing and mending. In 2023 and 2024, we worked with the Crafters Library to introduce some sewing and mending classes, and this year we are working with Explore Ecology, which is an environmental education nonprofit. They combine art and ecology to foster creative thinking and connection between people and the environment. And we have been hosting monthly free sewing and mending programs for teens and adults in Explore Ecology's makerspace since February. They have sewing volunteers, and it's a first-come, first-serve event where folks can bring any of their clothing items and actually learn how to use sewing machines, or learn how to hand-sew and fix their items themselves, but also in community with local experts as well. This... That is not the right slide. That's okay. And then, another key area that folks have requested to continue engaging in are plant-based cooking and maintaining healthy lifestyles. So, we have been working with Rooted Santa Barbara County, which is a nonprofit organization that empowers individuals to take a leading role in their own health, to offer some free cooking classes, thanks to the instructors at Rooted. We have taught some one-time cooking classes, but starting in June, we'll be teaching or facilitating a full month-long series of cooking classes that will be hands-on and interactive as well. Oh, I think we skipped a slide. Yeah. That's okay. For, in terms of garden education, this is our second year having a community garden plot at the Yen and Alley Community Garden. The library is really lucky to have staff at the library who have expertise in gardening and garden education. So, we have been able to facilitate storytimes for young children, volunteer opportunities for teens in need of community service credit, and just opportunities for folks to get their hands dirty in the garden and learn how to create, to plant and garden fruits, vegetables, flowers, et cetera. We're looking to continue having this community garden plot for the next several years and really elevate these programs as well. And then finally, I wanted to talk about a program that's coming up this Saturday in the name of reducing waste and promoting reuse. We're going to be hosting a fix-it fair, sometimes called a repair café. This will be hosted at the Central Library Plaza, thanks to many volunteers from the community who are volunteering their repair expertise to provide clothing mending, jewelry repair. We're working with three local bike shops to prepare, to provide bike repair. There will also be many local organizations and local businesses sharing information and services, and some handling... and services, and some hands-on activities like a plant swap with Idle Mercantile and an indigo dye bath with Explore Ecology. So, I invite folks to attend that event as well. Thank you. That's good. And then finally, I want to talk about our Library of Things collection. This is a collection that is ever-growing and quite popular for all ages at the library. So, in addition to community passes, early literacy kits, sewing machines, curricula, Alzheimer and dementia kits, with this grant, we are funding a tool library that will circulate power tools, garden tools, home repair tools to the community members. The collection is not circulating yet, but the Library of Things collection team is working to finalize circulation and waivers and making sure that everything's good to go. But, thank you so much.
And, Mr. Mayor and council members, I forgot to mention, we're going to do questions after each section, because there are 11 sections. So, if you have any questions for the library-
Any questions from council?
What time is the Fix-It Fair?
Oh, the Fix-It Fair is May 17th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then we will move on to Parks and Recreation.
All right, hello, council and mayor. I'm Monique O'Connor, the Parks and Recreation Open Space Planner, presenting on behalf of Jasmine LeBlanc. I'm happy to be here with you all today to speak about community programs that Parks and Rec oversees with a sustainability focus. First up, we have Arbor Day and Arbor Week. Parks and Rec is proud to be recognized for the incredible urban forest that we maintain in our city. Santa Barbara has been labeled a Tree City USA since 1980 and boasts an incredibly diverse urban forest with over 400 different species of trees. We're always on the lookout for opportunities to raise awareness about the value and importance of trees in our community. Each year, we use Arbor Day or Arbor Week to host events with local schools, sharing the work we do in planting trees with students on or nearby their school campuses. This year, 20 trees were planted during Arbor Week with the help of local students, including new street trees on Calle Rosales, Calle Vista de la Cumbre, Calle Noguera, and Calle Grande. This planting event is done in partnership with the nonprofit Santa Barbara Beautiful, who purchases the trees. Up next, wildfire resiliency. The wildfire resiliency project is near and dear to me and was started back in 2023. This project is a collaborative effort between Parks and Recreation and the Fire Department to improve the community's fire resilience and reduce the risk and severity of wildfires. The collaboration balances the expertise of both teams to manage vegetation while protecting the natural ecosystems within city open spaces. This project is primarily grant-funded, with about 4.5 million in combined funding from State Coastal Conservancy and CAL FIRE. This grant funding will support wildfire resiliency work efforts through spring 2029. The project has many components, but we would like to highlight the community outreach and volunteer events that are part of the wildfire resiliency project. These community events give both Parks and Rec and the Fire Department opportunity to share what we are doing, why we do it, and how community members can do their part at their own homes and neighborhoods to make Santa Barbara more resilient. At these events, we share information about home hardening and defensible space, our approach to vegetation management and fuel load reduction in city open spaces, and highlight the methodical and balanced approach to both reduce wildfire risk and improve the health of our local ecosystems. This collaborative effort between the two departments that incorporates not only vegetation clearance work, but also active habitat restoration is becoming the new model for wildfire mitigation. And trails. For many years, Parks and Recreation has organized trail maintenance events for our front country trail system. The department coordinates multiple large-scale volunteer events each year across city, county, Forest Service properties to help maintain the community's network of trails. These events are held in partnership with Santa Barbara County Parks, the U.S. Forest Service, Montecito Trails Foundation, Los Padres Forest Association, and Sage Trail Alliance. We've also been fortunate to receive regular donations from local businesses supporting the events, including REI and the Santa Barbara Chicken Ranch. When volunteers join, they receive instructions on how to safely care for and maintain a trail, and set off in small groups to get to work. Santa Barbara Parks currently houses two large community gardens, which give local residents the opportunity to grow their own organic crops, increase access to fresh, healthy foods in the community, and provide additional green spaces to the immediate area. Santa Barbara's community gardens are a low-cost way for community members to access outdoor space that they may not have otherwise. As shared in the library's presentation earlier, we're excited that the library recently took on a plot at the Yanan Alley Community Garden, where they host educational events to help community members learn more about growing their own fruits and vegetables. And finally, volunteering. We offer a variety of different volunteer opportunities in parks throughout the year. Our regularly scheduled opportunities include the annual rose pruning event and the opportunity to become a year-round rose garden volunteer at the Mission Historical Park. We also offer drop-in volunteering currently three days each week at Alice Keck Park Memorial Garden. In addition to these ongoing volunteer events, several department projects include specialized volunteer opportunities tailored to the unique needs of each project. Further, we continuously engage with community groups and local businesses to host volunteer events at parks across the city. We abide by a strict integrated pest management policy, so all city parks are considered "green," meaning that pesticides and herbicides are not used as part of standard practice. Instead, we rely on alternative methods to maintain our spaces, such as mechanized or hand-weed removal, mulching, green fertilizer, smart irrigation, and appropriate plant selection. Through our volunteer events, we help community members learn how to manage their gardens in the same sustainable way. And that's all I have, if there are any questions from the council.
Yeah, actually, because there's no action. If you have a comment to make at the same time, feel free.
Thank you. I'm going to catch up on my comments, and I think it's probably easier to comment as we go, but just first, starting with the title, I love the title of this whole slideshow, Building Capacity for Sustainable Action, and it's exactly what's happening with each of these that you're describing. We did have the benefit of seeing much of this at the Sustainability and Resilience Committee level, so I think we don't have too many questions, but just so far, the library programs, how you've extended the library into being so much more than just about books. The wildfire resilience projects, in particular, the Parma Park was an amazing project, is it's not just safer for wildfire, but then also creating the trails and the nature walks you led people through and all of the information and the partnership with fire mitigation. You're recently hearing talks about how we need both clearing spaces and green buffer spaces, and that's such a perfect relationship between the parks and wildfire resilience, too. So, so happy to hear that one. And the community gardens are amazing. There was a time when we were really fighting for those community gardens, so to see them so celebrated and proliferating is really great.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think I just saw a push-out on a tree donation program, five-gallon tree for residents. Is that your area, or is it coming up somewhere else with another one of these departments?
Councilmember Jordan is coming up with another department.
All right. I'll save the question. Thanks.
All right, very good. Thanks very much, and we'll move on.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Dakota Corey, and I'm the Water Supply and Services Manager for the city of Santa Barbara. And I'm actually going to tee up the water conservation presentation and then hand it over to Ms. Madeline Wood to give you more specifics on our program, but I just wanted to provide a little background. So, we'll take questions and comments after Madeline is done presenting. I just wanted to emphasize that we've taken a strategic approach to water conservation in our programming for several years now. We have a water conservation strategic plan that analyzes each of the programs that we offer to our community, both for cost-effectiveness, also things like demand hardening. Is there still need for that program in our community, or have we moved on and we're ready for different things? We are providing an update to our water conservation strategic plan currently. We're working on that, and that's being driven by, one, new state regulations, and, two, the fact that we have some new technologies available to us that we want to integrate into our programs if it's feasible and cost-effective. Going on to the next slide, this is one of my favorite graphs, and those who've heard my presentations before know I love graphs, but this really just shows the effectiveness of our water conservation program and the fact that the city and our community has really embraced water conservation as a way of life. And let me just walk you through it, because there's kind of a lot going on here. You'll see the blue bars at the bottom of the graph. That represents rainfall all the way back to 1899 through 2024. And so, as we all know, as residents here, we have very flashy precipitation. Sometimes it rains a whole lot, and sometimes it doesn't rain much at all. The yellow highlighted squares represent periods of drought. And then, if you want to look at the blue line that runs horizontally from the lower left-hand corner to the upper right-hand corner, that's population growth, also starting back in 1899 and going to 2024. And you'll see that there was a pretty steady increase in population all the way until about the mid-'90s, early-'90s, where it started to level out. We all know that we're a pretty built-out city, so we haven't seen as much population growth in the most recent past. And then, where it all gets really exciting and interesting to me is if you look at the green line, which is our water production, also back all the way to 1899, and you can see that that water production runs parallel to population. It's increasing at about the same rate until about 1965, 1960s, where it really starts to level off. And what you're seeing is our community becoming much more efficient. So, population is increasing, but water use is holding steady. And I like to point out, if you look at the end of the graph, where we sit currently, our water use is about the same as it was in the 1950s, while population has more than doubled. So, the efficiency is just phenomenal. Our community really does embrace water conservation as a way of life. And then finally, I just wanted to characterize who our water customers are in this community, because we really build our programs to address all of our customers. You'll see here on this graph that 72%, the large majority of our customers, are residential customers, and so we have many programs that are specific to helping people use water more efficiently in their homes. But we also have programs for all of our other customers, including commercial, industrial, dedicated irrigation, our meters that serve just landscape. So, with that background in mind, I'm going to go ahead and turn the presentation over to Ms. Wood to give you more specifics on our programs.
Mayor Rouse and members of the council, my name's Madeline Wood. I'm the Water Conservation Analyst, and we'll be digging into some of these conservation programs. So, I like to think of our program as having three legs to the stool. On the left, we have operational, which is our meters, our tiered rates, the water loss control program, so that's water lost in our distribution system, and recycled water that offsets potable water use. On the far right, we have the regulatory stool leg, which is the plumbing code, our landscape code, the objectives that are set for us by the state, as well as the reporting that we do to the state and federal level. And then the middle is the fun stuff. That's the external programs. That's the rebates and the outreach and the education, and that's what I'll be focusing on today, but keep in mind the other two legs of the stool are doing a lot of work in the background as well. Excellent. So, to start off with, the city has had a robust conservation program dating back to the 1970s, and part of that started with water waste prevention. So, in our municipal code, we do prohibit the waste of water, whether we are in a drought or not. We never have enough water to waste. Also, dating back, back to the '80s, we've had water-efficient landscape standards for development projects to make sure that as we develop and redevelop, we're doing it in a sustainable way to reduce the amount of water that's used outdoors. And more recently, oh, it's fine. More recently, we have upgraded our meters to automated metering infrastructure, also called AMI, and this is a system of meters and communication networks that can transmit water use information from the meter to the city as well as the customer. So, what we used to have was essentially one data point a month for people to understand their water use. They could see the whole 30 days, and there would just be one big bucket of water that they used during that period. And currently, next slide, please, we have our WaterSmart website. So, this was launched in March of 2024, and people are able to see their water use not only on a monthly level, but also a weekly, daily, and down to the hour of water use. So, if someone has a high water bill, they're able to look back and say, oh, it's May, and it looks like, starting in May, every Tuesday and Saturday at 5:00 a.m., I see a huge spike in my water use. It must be my irrigation timer. And this level of data is something that we've never had before, and it's very exciting for us to be able to offer it to our customers. This is the WaterSmart portal website. On the right is the mobile view, and in the middle is the desktop view. And the little red bars that you can see there are indicating a possible leak. So, along with this program, we can also send automated alerts for leaks if there is continuous water use that is noted going through the meter. The portal is available in English and Spanish, and since we went live about a year ago, we have about 51% registration rate. I think today it's actually almost 53% of our customers using the portal. Next slide, please. We have a variety of rebates. We have a lawn replacement rebate for removing your lawn and replacing it with water-based plants and drip irrigation, and most recently, in February, we have partnered with the Creeks Division to offer a stacked rebate. So, if you're removing the lawn and putting in a rain garden that's going to slow and sink and spread the water from the roof downspout, there's an additional incentive on top of that, which we're really excited to offer to folks. We also have rebates for efficient irrigation, smart timers that can adjust themselves based on the weather, drip conversion, low precipitation nozzles, those are fancy sprinkler nozzles, and then laundry-to-landscape great water systems. And speaking of laundry, we also have a high-efficiency washing machine rebate. We offer a rebate for a delivery of the county's mulch, which comes in a big dump truck load, so you can spread it out on your landscape and keep evaporation down. And we offer rebates on the Flume Home Monitoring Device, which is basically like personal AMI that can be added on top of the city's existing system, and it sends out alerts because it's able to continuously monitor water in real time down to the minute. Also, for our large commercial users, we have a survey and incentive program for all uses on the site, and we offer recommendations for efficiency upgrades that have a good return on investment. We think it's important to educate the water users of the future, so we've got a lot of youth education programs. We have in-class presentations from Explore Ecology that teach children where their water comes from, how to use it wisely. We offer musical assemblies for elementary students, field trips to the wastewater treatment plant, where their favorite place is the stinky tank, as they call it. And then also, we have some countywide programs. So, we have our Waterwise High School Video Contest, where high schoolers countywide can compete to participate in creating a PSA, both in English and Spanish, as well as a science fair award for the countywide science fair. And for adult education outreach, we have our Green Gardener Certification Course. That's now in its 25th year. This is a 15-week bilingual class that's taught through the City College School of Extended Learning, and it teaches gardeners and landscape professionals about sustainable landscaping, pest management, irrigation. And we also have our GardenWise TV show, which covers all things gardening, and that airs countywide, and we have a lot of fun with that show. And then we also pool with our other water providers throughout the county to do marketing campaigns countywide and have the same consistent messaging. For online resources, we, of course, have our WaterSmart website. We have a variety of videos for all of the DIYers out there in terms of how to check your toilet for leaks, how to repair sprinkler leaks, et cetera. Here on this screen is our Waterwise Garden Database, and it is an interactive virtual tour through multiple Santa Barbara gardens, where you can click on the plants you like, learn more about them, add them to a list, print it out, bring it to your local nursery. And we also have a watering calculator, where you can put in information about your garden, and it'll spit out a recommended watering schedule. And to end, I just wanted to highlight some fun facts from the last 10 years of our conservation participation. We've had over 1,300 landscape rebates issued, over 2,500 mulch delivery rebates for schoolchildren. We've been able to do education for more than 23,000 of them, 401,000 and counting video views on YouTube. And for AMI, since that's only been the last year, that is, at this point, 51% registration rate, which is over 15,000, and we've sent over 23,000 automated leak alerts through that program. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Ms. Ned?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Just comments. Well, I do have one question, actually, but the question I have is for- the question I have is, for all these rebates, which are really phenomenal, like I've been hearing people talking about them, where can they find them? Like, that whole list of all these different rebates, where's a good place to go?
Councilmember Sneddon, the best place to go would be our website. So, if you just type in santabarbara.ca.gov/rebates, you'll even get there quicker than /waterwise.
Because there are quite a few.
Yes.
And then another question with that is, so what kind of incentives or rebates do we have for renters?
I'm trying to think. That's a good question. Most of the rebates are geared towards hard changes because those are the most long-term. So, that's, some renters may have the ability to change out a washing machine. That might be within their control. Some renters just work with their property owner because they want a mulch delivery, or they want to change the landscaping, and as long as the landlord signs off on it. But most of these are hard, long-term appliances and gardening changes, which are generally not under the purview of renters. But some renters are account holders, and so they have access to everything that's in WaterSmart, and they also have access to learning how to find leaks, repair leaks, et cetera, and we have all of those resources available to them.
Thank you. And I guess multifamily is doing so much conservation. Multifamily homes are doing so much conservation anyway, shown by the graphs and charts there, too, which I'm surprised that Councilmember Jordan isn't yet commenting on that graph that he often comments on. So, in a positive way, yeah. So, I guess another, I guess those are my only questions. I mean, the conservation really is a way of life now, and I think many of us remember being here in the 80s when Sheila Lodge was mayor, and, you know, you couldn't run water at all, really. It's become a long way, and now it's so ingrained in what we do. So, appreciate what you're doing there.
All right, very good. Well, for those of us that deal in regulatory issues all the time, I do appreciate the leadership in this particular division because what's proven is that top-down leadership or top-down penalties isn't always the way to go. Sometimes you bring people along for the ride, you get much better results. And I always remember the term drought fatigue and not trying to drag our people into drought fatigue by continually hitting them over the head. And I think it proves it. You've been successful. So, congratulations on a really fabulous water conservation program. You brought the community along for the ride, and it's an example when we come up to trying to regulate other kinds of things, or commodities, or usages, or fees that we should always be mindful of, I think. And with that, we'll move on to the next thing.
Good afternoon. My name is Hillary Allen, and I'm an environmental specialist with the Clean Community Division. Clean Community does incredible work upkeeping and maintaining our programs behind the scenes, from making sure community members are subscribed to trash service, maintaining our public container fleet, which is over 2,000 containers citywide, keeping businesses in compliance with state and local laws, which includes organics compliance, offering kitchen trainings in English and in Spanish, and many other services. Basically, if you don't see us, then we're doing our job. So, today, we're going to highlight a few current programs and a few that are new this year. So, textile recycling. Californians throw away 1.2 million tons of textiles a year, and textiles are the fastest-growing component of California landfills. So, this year, Clean Community partnered with two local jurisdictions and the hauler to develop a regional textile diversion program. Finding a stable and transparent vendor for this material has been problematic in the past. Our goal was to create a textile program that handles this waste stream in a responsible manner while keeping as many textiles out of landfills as possible. So, we chose to partner with Homeboy Threads, a part of Homeboy Industries, because of their transparency, their location. LA is actually quite close for textile diversion options, and their role in the community as a social enterprise. The goal is to have multiple textile drop-off locations throughout the region. Our monthly neighborhood cleanups. We pick up approximately 300 bags of trash from these neighborhoods each year. But these monthly neighborhood cleanups are more than just cleanups. Cleanup locations are chosen using SB Connect data, Neighborhood Improvement Task Force information, community member complaints, and hotspot data. We want to make sure that we clean parts of town that are forgotten or may be under-resourced. We want people to see that we are responsive and that we hear them when they tell us there's an issue. We engage with the neighbors, who then clean their own neighborhoods, and therefore, they share the ownership of the area. We learn so much from the neighbors about neighborhood issues. For example, an area not street-swept because of tree bulb outs may attract abandoned cars, or there may be parking issues based on density near City College, or other neighborhood nuisances. Having a city employee on hand to witness the issue and take the information back to the city team has helped us to be nimble and to address and solve real problems brought to us by our community members. The community yard sale. I don't know if any of you enjoyed this over the weekend. We had it on Saturday, so this year, we hosted our first-ever community yard sale. We invited community members to host their own yard sale on May 10th, which was this past Saturday. This event was designed to encourage reuse, build community, and to support the city's zero-waste goals by keeping reusable items out of landfills. Community members signed up online, and a week before the event, Clean Community staff distributed free yard signs, magnets with local waste facility resource information, and Dune Coffee gift cards to community members who are hosting a yard sale. We will talk about Dune on our next slide because there is a nexus there. Our outreach division designed an online interactive map depicting all addresses hosting yard sales and promoted and advertised the event. Clean Community also shared information about local thrift stores and locations where reusable items can be dropped off rather than thrown away. So, we have an upcoming pilot this summer, so our reusable coffee cup program. And one of the areas where Clean Community felt like we could help reduce waste is at local coffee shops, where single-use cups are the norm. We partnered with Dune Coffee, a local vendor, to create a pilot program to help challenge customers to make different choices when they order coffee. For summer 2025, we're going to increase the Bring Your Own Personal Cup discount in order to make choosing for here cup more attractive. We're also working with Dune to have reusable clay cups shown up there in the top right, available for purchase. We promoted this pilot at Earth Day and have outreach materials and data available that explains why choosing a reusable cup is better for the environment. And we gave out these Dune Coffee Cards to the folks who signed up for the community yard sale as a way to encourage the program and then support our local partner. And so, this brings us back to our regular scheduled upkeep and maintenance of our programs. There are additional services offered to the community in terms of waste management. Basically, if there are items that the community members have that do not go in the trash, recycling, or green waste, we offer local facilities where residents can take these items. There are public drop-off events where community members can take e-waste, such as light bulbs, small appliances, battery-powered items, and HHW, which stands for household hazardous waste, such as antifreeze oil and paint. We also have public facilities where these items can be dropped off. Community members can request free mail-in service for Sharps containers, and there are drop-off facilities available for Styrofoam, medicine, and even ammunition. Additionally, our bulky item program has been expanded to be accessible to all residents, including multi-unit, folks in apartments in multi-unit situations. So, if they're not the account holder, they can still call and take advantage of this service, and they do not have to go through their landlord to take advantage. So, this brings more equitable access to this service and helps to combat illegal dumping in neighborhoods. And that is the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments on this section? Ms. Sneddon?
Comment. The community yard sale was so fun, so well-advertised, and really great community building. And I just wanted to comment, I did a beach cleanup. It was so easy. I hadn't done it before. It was so easy to pick up the buckets and the grabbers, and the kit was all together, and so easy to drop it back off. So, I don't know, it took less than five minutes to pick the things up and drop them back off, but then doing a beach cleanup. So, I just want to thank you.
We're always available to support litter cleanups.
Yeah, and thank you. And when do the coffee cups roll out, the clay coffee cups?
We are, we're still getting the dates finalized, but that should be rolling out in June, maybe mid-June. We really want it to be a summer, a summer program, so we want it to sort of be in conjunction with the beginning of summer.
Very excited. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I have a question that kind of, probably maybe even goes more to the waste hauler question, but we have chronic collectors of recycled goods out of our home containers that I'm always running into. And what is the basic statement on that? Because I know that's part of our waste stream that goes to our waste hauler. So, and it's like, I mean, the idea is, of course, you can take stuff to recycling center, and that keeps junk off the ground, but these are collective, these are collected in advance by homeowners and whatnot, and then all of a sudden, a lot of that material is gone, and gone through, or you have people maybe on your property going through your cans, which is not a good thing.
That's a tricky question. You know, we tend to try to have that be a police department question. You know, are people trespassing on your property? Are they causing you any trouble? Are they making a mess? The other side of it is, is if folks are on foot and they're not making a big mess, sometimes we sort of allow it because those folks need those cans more than the rest of us. So, that's sort of a gray area. You know, if somebody's not making too much of an impact, generally, we don't hassle them. But if they are trespassing or making a mess, then we can send the police department out to handle the situation.
But isn't there some kind of a commodity impact on the waste hauler contract itself? I mean, maybe that's a question of Ms. Parental, I'm not sure, but...
Mayor Rouse, technically, any waste in a waste bin belongs to Marburg. It is their property, but I don't think it's a meaningful impact on their, what they're dropping off at the transfer station. But as Ms. Allen said, unless it's a public nuisance, we typically are a little bit hands-off. If it becomes a nuisance, then we take action.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Move on to the next section.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Erin Markie, the Creeks Division Manager, here to talk to you about our community programs, which, not surprisingly, focus on water quality improvement and creek restoration. Next slide. I'm going to start out with a brand-new program that you heard a little bit about in Water Conservation's program, but our Sustainable Stormwater Rebate Program was launched basically at the end of February, early March, which provides incentives for voluntary stormwater improvements, so efforts to collect rainwater runoff and retain it on-site. And these small measures, when amplified across the city, can really build community resiliency, both for drought and flooding, while also improving water quality downstream in our creeks and ocean. So, currently, the program is offering incentives for disconnected downspouts, so basically, downspouts that are currently piped to the street, redirecting those to landscape areas on-site. Rain barrels, so capturing roof runoff in a barrel that can be used later. Rain gardens, so shallow landscape depressions, which again, can take runoff and give it time to kind of soak and sink into the surrounding soil. And then lastly, hardscape or pavement removal. So, we've, you know, we've just launched this program. Applicants can propose any one of these. They can propose all four. As Ms. Wood mentioned, they can be stacked and combined with the existing landscape rebates and water conservation. We really modeled our program after theirs, so thanks for Madeline for all her coordination that went into us launching this program. We are working together on our, both of our applications reference each other's programs so that we can really coordinate with applicants most effectively and efficiently. And since launching the program, you know, just two months ago or so, we have already had 25 applicants. We've even had two completed projects already. So, there's been a lot of community interest. We're excited to watch, you know, that impact grow over time, and already kind of thinking about and looking at ways that the program could be expanded in the future. Next, we have our Creek Tree Program, which has been around for a number of years, provides funding to creekside property owners to plant native riparian trees along their creek. We provide funding for the trees themselves, the installation and irrigation, with the goal of providing streamside habitat improvements. We will fund up to the first $1,000, cost-free to the homeowner, and then up to $5,000 if they contribute 25% match. And then, community volunteers. We get the community involved in hands-on events. These include planting events at our restoration sites, our reading at those beach and creek cleanups. And it's just an amazing opportunity to kind of outreach to the community about the work that we are doing, and also the why behind it, why it's important. These are just some examples of local community groups that we've recently volunteered with. And yeah, next slide. Next, I was going to talk about Creek Week, which is a countywide annual event, usually towards the end of September. Shout out to our community engagement team, which really does a tremendous amount of work to coordinate this week-long event countywide. These are some of the examples of the events that the Creeks Division hosted last year. The Landshark Tour, I highly encourage anyone to join us on. It's always sold out and a very popular event, but we drive around to a number of different creeks and creek projects that we've done, both restoration and stormwater demonstration projects, and it's just a really great event. This last year, we launched our Urban Creek Trail program, and as part of that, we hosted a tour as part of Creek Week. It was super well-attended and happy to share more about this program with you. So, we've launched our Lower Mission Creek Trail at this point. We just are about to launch what we're calling the Mission Bridge Trail. It's the more middle section of Mission Creek. We are going to be hosting a community walk of that, actually, this Sunday at 10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. It's a four-mile trail, so I'll just put it out there. It's a one-way, four-mile trail, so we are looking for RSVPs so that we can shuttle people back. So, if you are interested, email creeks@santabarbara.ca.gov. Otherwise, if you're on your own for your transportation back and forth. But the goal of these trails is to really, you know, connect our community with our creeks. And so, most of our creeks run through our urban environment, and so how can we, you know, through sidewalks and bridges, connect people to the projects that we're doing, connect people to the resources that are there, and so that they can better, you know, understand and be stewards of these environments. And as part of that, we're aiming to have kind of quarterly staff-led tours of these. And then, as the Creek Trails program grows, we'll eventually have trails across the city and each of the city's watersheds. And then lastly, our Clean Water Business Program. This is another program that's been around for a long time and allows us to really get kind of voluntary compliance for our best practices as far as not having pollution go into our streets and storm drains and eventually our creeks. We, it's a really great education opportunity to spread awareness to business owners. We also have an assistance program where we can provide funding to those businesses to get to different materials and equipment they might need, like shop vacs and drain covers and different containment measures so that they can be a clean business and do the right thing. So, we provide up to $1,000 under that program for those types of materials. But it's a great way for us to achieve those voluntary compliance and see reductions and illicit discharges over time. There's 170 businesses participating. They're on our website, and we promote them in different ways throughout the year. And that's it. If there are any questions for creeks.
Questions or comments for the section? Ms. Sneddon?
Just a comment. There's so many incentives, again, in this program, too, to be planting trees and take care of your creekside. And the Creek Week last year, what's always amazing, but it really, that extra creek walk, it was amazing. You had people there who had, you know, studied creeks for a long time, learning new things. You heard people all through there being like, "What?" And then it was also a great opportunity to be telling about city programs and how it would impact things, and talking about downspouts and other things. So, I just, I love those, and the whole format of it with the QR code and the map, and it brought people together in a different way. So, I'm really happy to hear those are continuing, and it's just a lot of fun things at the creeks. Thank you.
All right. Further questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Move on to the next section.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, councilmembers. My name is Sam Furtner, Mobility Coordinator with the Energy and Climate Division at SNR, joined today by my cohort here, Christian Hoffland and Stephanie Holmes, who will be speaking in the coming slides. Next slide, please. So, just a quick update on bike share here in the city of Santa Barbara. We're excited to continue to see We're excited to continue to see the program evolve and build. Since program launch in 2021, we launched in January, we've had over 2 million miles ridden on B-cycle shared bikes in the city. We're seeing a lot of success with that program. We're seeing a lot of regular usage, but we have identified that the program could do better. And with that aim, we applied for some grant funding from the Clean Mobility Options Voucher Pilot Program. It's a joint venture with CARB and Calstart Funding, with the intent to provide funding for zero emission mobility options in under-resourced communities in California. So we're excited to commence that project and to deliver $1.5 million-plus of grant funding to help build out hard Bike Share infrastructure, as well as community engagement, to get more people using this as an active transportation option. Again, the intent with Bike Share is to increase access to safe, reliable, convenient, and affordable transportation options for users in the city. Caveat here, Bike Share does not work for everyone, but can work really well as an additional transportation option. And when you think about 2 million miles ridden on Bike Share bikes, if you just casually assume that even half of those miles are replacing a vehicle trip, we're talking about a significant reduction in vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas emissions. So we are seeing a lot of benefit with this program. Excuse me. Next slide. Another program I wanted to touch on is our Safe Routes to School Program. This is a education and encouragement program that began in the city in the late '90s. It was a little bit more grassroots when it started, and then we discovered that we wanted to see more impact in the program. And the program began to scale throughout the South Coast. As I mentioned, started in the late '90s. The program now is operating both in South County and North County. Move, Santa Barbara County is our contracted operator, and they've done a very good job of delivering effective and early active transportation education in our region's schools. We have 17 Santa Barbara schools that participate, and in the South Ca, uh, South Coast, we also have participation from the jurisdictions of Galida, Carpinteria, and the County of Santa Barbara. So again, this is an, an early touchpoint to help build that confidence for our younger riders and walkers getting to school, to open doors for active transportation as an option moving forward.
And both Mr. Furtner and Mr. Houghland are doing transportation, so we can hold questions till after they're both finished.
Thank you. As you may recall, from last summer's Climate Action Plan update, the transportation sector, and specifically light-duty vehicles, comprise the bulk of the city's carbon emissions. So it's our division's point of emphasis is to work on this sector and to enable and empower the public to use alternative and carbon-free modes of transportation, including electric vehicles. So the city's been a leader, installing its first publicly accessible EV charger over 10 years ago, and now has over 70 electric vehicle charging stations that it hosts, including 16 new fast charging stations just a couple blocks from here at Ortega Garage. These chargers support not only our residents, but also workforce and economic vitality of the city with its visitors. We've been successful in acquiring over $3 million worth of grants and have another $4.8 million pending, the vast majority of which are county and state grants and are not subject to being swept by federal changes in policy. We have several upcoming installations that you should be aware of. We have 18 fast chargers that will be going in at the Harbor East Side Library and Antrak stations later this year. We will be co-branding the Lower Mission Creek Creek Trail adjacent to the Antrak Station, since it's just around the corner, and hopefully, people that are fast-charging their vehicles there will be able to get out and see part of lower downtown and our beautiful creeks. A very important sector that we've identified to help provide access to is the two-thirds of city residents that rent and don't have easy access to charging at home, and thus can't access the myriad of EV incentives available to them, especially for our moderate and lower-income residents. It's particularly important for us to figure out ways to provide access for these residents. Very proud to have recently been awarded a grant from the California Energy Commission in collaboration with UCSB to bring $1.2 million and install 130 chargers at affordable housing locations and at Santa Barbara Unified School Districts to support local nearby multifamily residents in low-income communities within the city. I want to point out that the success that we've been having is due to partnerships with private-public partnerships that allow us to move rapidly and get outside funding to help rapidly increase the access, EV charging accessibility within the city, as well as the partnerships at the various different departments within the city that host the, the parking spaces that we utilize for these. Thank you.
Before we move on to incentives, including electric vehicle incentives, do you have any questions for Mr. Furtner?
Any questions? Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have one thing that always perplexes me on EVs and hybrids, and so, does anybody actually know how many EVs and hybrids exist in the city of Santa Barbara? And then, how many of them actually have home chargers versus have to rely on public chargers?
Councilmember Jordan, that's a great question. I don't have the specific data in front of me. The California Transportation Department does release countywide data that shows the registration numbers. We're currently at about 30% of new vehicle purchases are electric vehicles in our county, which exceeds the state average. Currently, the vast majority of all electric vehicles have been going to places that are single-family homes where it's easy to install EV charging access. We have lower adoption rates amongst our renting and multifamily sectors.
Hey, Harry, so the, I didn't hear what you said, on the, the vast majority of new EVs or hybrids are going to single-family homes, but do you have any idea, then, do those single-family homes have home chargers? I mean, if they're, if they're in, I would presume, being a hybrid family, that, you know, you, you can plug that into a normal outlet in your garage or whatever, but a true EV might take you a week to charge up doing that. So I would assume that most hybrids can use at home, but an EV, do you have any idea how many EVs get taken home and they literally have to go sit up at Lacoumbre and line up with the coffee crowd or something? I mean, it's all that, the reason I ask that question is like, I think it's great what we're doing, but I just don't, I don't know how the, if you're using statewide or countywide data, how the determination is between putting in more public chargers, incentivizing more home chargers, because where are the cars actually, where are the cars and what's the need matching up to that actually in the city? Do we work on getting that kind of data, or it's gotta be, it's not handed to you, I know that.
So Councilmember Jordan, when you purchase an electric vehicle, most often, there's an accompanying charger that you either are given or purchase in alignment with that.
For a hybrid, right? Also for an EV?
Well, a hybrid, a plug-in hybrid.
Yeah.
Yeah, might plug into a 110 outlet.
Right.
Or might use, in some cases, a Level 2 charger, but it would be less necessary then. It would be, the, the vast majority of the benefit for buying an electric vehicle would, would require charging at home. What the, the gap we're looking to fill is that we don't have a lot of uptake in multifamily because that is such a challenge to install charging infrastructure, and the work that Mr. Houghland's been doing and getting grant funds for looks to close that gap. And it has to be very creative, particularly in a city that is aesthetically inclined as Santa Barbara, where perhaps curbside charging is not a great option for us. This has been a really creative solution to look at school district property where the employees can charge during the day and then multifamily tenants can charge in, at night. Of course, there's not a one-size-fits-all solution, so we're continuing to look at others.
I'll wander over and talk to you sometime about this, because it interests me, because you can only charge during the day if you have a plug-in hybrid. You're certainly not going to get much gain on a true EV that requires a Level 2 charger and a 50-amp service, right? That kind of thing?
Right. You, so the, you're, you're, you're kind of getting the jump on the presentation because the next slide is about our EV incentives, which looks to cover some of those.
You can tell I struggle with this already at home, because it's like 30 mi, 40 miles for eight hours of charging, and we're, we're going towards the Level 2. And I'm just wondering how that all factors into the bigger picture. Is, are there a bunch of me out there, and that's what we're chasing? Or are we chasing a bunch of Level 2 installations on private residences because that's what's being sold in the state?
We couldn't have teed up the next presenter better.
Okay. I'll get out of the way. Thanks.
All right. Very good. Any other further questions or comments on this section? Okay, we'll move on.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm Stephanie Holmes, Energy and Climate Specialist, and I administer Santa Barbara Clean Energy's customer-facing programs. I'll be providing an overview of our residential EV program, home electrification accelerator program, and our brand-new Community Tree Program. Oh, just kidding. Yep, that's on me. Sorry. Got ahead of myself. So SBCE's residential EV program offers rebates to customers for choosing to drive electric. In the fall of 2024, the program expanded its offerings to the purchase, from the purchase of EVs to include rebates for EV chargers and electrical work associated with the installations of those EV chargers. As a team, we also increased the rebate levels for income-qualified residents to make them more inclusive and equitable. In the future, we'd like to further explore partnerships with local dealerships to offer a point-of-sale rebate for income-qualified customers to kind of lower the barrier of entry for EV ownership. Thank you. In January, staff launched the Home Electrification Accelerator Program, designed to target the second-biggest emission source in Santa Barbara, natural gas. HEAP incentivizes SBCE customers to make the switch to electric appliances by providing rebates, fast and free permitting, and live assistance in the form of our Home Electrification Advisor Service that launched a couple weeks ago. Our rebate offerings include those for heat pump water heaters and associated electrical work. Our rebates can stack with other heat pump water heater incentives, with the exception of 3CE, so our customers can get even more money off of their electrification projects. In the near future, this program will also offer emergency replacement services for when water heaters go out. Something exciting that just launched is Santa Barbara Clean Energy's Community Tree Program. In support of the Carbon Sequestration Section of the Climate Action Plan, we are giving drought-tolerant trees to the community to plant on their private property. Right now, Santa Barbara Clean Energy customers can reserve a tree through our website and will be emailed a pickup date and location. Our inventory is limited, so reserve your tree at SBCE's website. This pilot is in collaboration with our Creeks Division, and we hope to hold additional events in the future, depending on the success of this one. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Very good. Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Sorry, Kristen, I beat you to it. I had a question for our staff. Thank you, first off, this is an incredible presentation, on the Home Electrification Accelerator Program and essentially the residential EV program, well, actually, more for the electrification one. Is this only for homeowners, or do we have something in place for renters? Like, how does it work if you're a renter also looking to take advantage of this program?
Councilmember Santa Maria, yes. At the moment, our programs are just for single-family residences. We are working very hard on bringing home electrification services to multifamily residences as well. I, I cut it from the presentation, which I kind of regret now, but we are working on bringing multifam, or charging to multifamily units, as my director, Ms. Parento, mentioned, is quite complicated, so it's taking a while. We want to do it properly so that it can be accessible to as many people as possible. And we have other plans for the future, hopefully getting a HVAC rebate in place in addition to heat pump water heaters, but that is, remains to be seen for the moment.
Of course. Thank you. One final clarifying question for the single-family homes that are covered right now by the Home Electrification Accelerator Program. Is that program only for if the owner lives in the single-family home, or is that also available for a, somebody who is renting a single-family home?
Excellent question, Councilmember Santa Maria. So with instances like that, and we have had a couple of those, owner and tenant can work together to like install a heat pump water heater. We have had a few of those, as I mentioned. And also, the Home Electrification Advisor Service is open to everybody, renters and homeowners, and that's basically just a, a resource for people who want to electrify their lives, like kind of decarbonize their lifestyle and want to know where to start. So it's not just for like, you know, sort of a Q&amp;A for our programs, it's to answer like what incentives are available, where somebody could start, kind of wherever they are in their electrification journey.
Okay. And, and for any tenants of single-family homes, or owners, of course, would your website be the best place for them to go and, and check out, you know, these programs and how they could get started on this? Or what would be the best way for them to get more information?
Oh, yes. Please come to our website. We have a submission form available on the website for the Home Electrification Accelerator Service, and it's a place where you can enter your name and like a brief description of your inquiry so that our staff can prepare and get back to you. And we do offer that in English and Spanish to just make it more accessible.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I guess I had questions I didn't realize about B-cycle and then the point-of-sale. I guess we'll just ask them in whichever, or, or, oh, sure. Thank, thank you. So, for just some information on the B-cycle, which I cannot believe, it's been since 2021 already, is it, do you know if it's mostly residents or tourists, or who's using them?
Councilmember Sneddon, it's a great question. We get asked that quite a bit. The short answer is, we do not know. We can make some assumptions based on use. An example of that might be somebody commuting from the West Side, stationed by Harding School at 8:30 in the morning, Monday through Friday. Compare that to somebody commuting from Upper State Street at 5:00 p.m. on Friday night down to the funk zone.
That's me.
So there's, there's, exactly. And so you're a resident in town. One might assume that the person commuting from Upper State Street is a tourist, but we don't know that. So what we do know is where people go and the stations that get used the most. That being said, something we're really excited about with Clean Mobility Options is the potential to put geolocation devices in every bike that are capturing behavior in real-time that's anonymous, so it's not tied to an app interface. And what that's going to allow us to see is how those CMO-funded bikes are moving from our designated low-income stations to other areas throughout the community in real-time, to the point that we could capture a monthly report of, this is where this bike went, this is the typical usage that we see, you know, does a waterfront bike stay in the waterfront area? Or is it actually going up to the mesa, you know, at 5:00 p.m. on Friday night? So we have some degree of data available through the app interface, but a lot of that data is eluding us right now, and we're excited to leverage grant funding to, to better understand that.
It's exciting. I'm really glad it's getting to where we can sort of, I don't know, make it more accessible for lower income. We've talked about that for a long time and not so much been able to. And then, do you know if most of them are memberships or single-use? Do you have, like, who, you know, someone buying the monthly membership with the Bcycle or sort of like pay-as-you-go?
Historically speaking, we've had a fairly consistent, albeit growing, portion of annual regular members, which one could assume, again, that's a more regular user. Our monthly memberships have been fairly consistent as well, and our daily walk-up memberships are a, a lower portion of the pie, I would say. But it's important to point out that I talk to tourists on a regular basis who come to town for a weekend and buy a monthly membership.
Right.
Because it's the most cost-affordable. So even within those different splits, it's hard to ascertain who's using what and how. That being said, Bike Share is meant to provide another transportation option. And I know at the beginning of Bike Share discussions, there was a lot of concern about competing with other bike rental agencies, et cetera, in town. We did a lot to change the pricing structure of the product and to try to, you know, discuss that with, with partners in town. But at the end of the day, Bike Share, again, is an option that can work well for some people, and it's an option that can be part of a suite of transportation uses. of a suite of transportation uses. And whether that's riding MTD, or whether that's taking a Bike Share bike, whether it's walking, whether it's taking a car, our intent is to give people options. Some people are going to choose, you know, hey, I'm in town, I want to rent a bike, I want to have a helmet, I want to know there's going to be four, I want to be able to rent one for my child. B-Cycle does not offer that.
Okay.
So, and similarly, you know, we're seeing a lot of people that use B-Cycle for a while, and anecdotally, from speaking to residents mostly in town, people kind of get hooked on riding an e-bike, but then they want something that they can park in front of their office, bring in their house at night. They know it's going to be there, and I think that's part of the reason we're seeing more people riding e-bikes on the road.
So it's like a gateway to that. But that was my next question. As that's sort of more people are purchasing their own, are you seeing the usage of the B-Cycles going down, or is it sort of holding steady?
To date, we've been fairly consistent, but I would like to put an asterisk by that, which is that our network, similar to Santa Barbara, is somewhat built out now. So if you're a rider who lives Upper State Street, for example, there's only so many stations nearby. Our goal is to help expand that network and provide more low-income area access. So I anticipate that with more bikes, more docks on the ground, and a community resource contribution of a lot more low-income passes made available, we'll see ridership numbers increase.
I think so. And so that would be like at grocery stores or at schools? Where do you make it the most accessible?
Excellent question. So in this mode of shared mobility, we see a lot of public-private partnerships, and B-Cycle is a public-private partnership. They agreed to launch in the city of Santa Barbara at essentially no cost. However, one of the things that they're looking for in that launch is a station that's going to generate revenue. So we look at a station that's going to get a lot of usage, that's near a key destination. A station in a residential neighborhood not near a key destination is not going to generate the kind of traffic that B-Cycle would necessarily want. And so our hope is that we will be able to leverage some of this grant funding to expand into harder-to-reach areas that might not have made economic sense.
Thank you. That explains that. I was sort of, I was missing that. Thank you. And then, I think those were my questions about B-Cycle. And then about the charging in -- at the high school or with the school district. And I know we've talked about this for a long time, and how to get it so that multifamily residences or low-income residents have ability to charge, and just if you have updates on, like, how many people are there? Are they in place yet, or how many people are using them? Are they fully utilized at the school district?
Councilmember Sneddon, the grant to install the EV chargers at -- with Santa Barbara Unified School District, we're just signing the subversive agreement with UCSB now.
Okay.
And so those are going to start -- kick off the project in the next month, and we should be seeing those get put in by next fall.
Okay, thank you.
Seventy-eight Level Two chargers at four or five Santa Barbara Unified Schools.
Okay. Thank you. That's very exciting. And then, I'm not sure that people realize that, you know, the $4,000 electric vehicle rebate, and that's for used as well vehicles? If you're low-income?
Councilmember Sneddon, so we do have a $4,000 rebate for a -- that's the low-income rebate for vehicles, and it's a base rebate of $1,000.
And it counts for used vehicles as well?
It does count for used vehicles as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just one more question about the home electrification. Are there incentives for stoves and ovens, or?
At this time, we don't have any rebates for induction cooktops. We are super supportive of the library right now because they have the induction cooktop that you can check out, as well as some energy efficiency kits. That's something that we are looking into for the future, definitely to expand on that.
Just to add on that, we are really tackling, since the goal is to decarbonize, we're tackling the bigger gas users, which tend to be space and water heating.
Thank you so much. And that is, the Library of Things is amazing. I checked out an induction stove there, too, and I was like, oh, now I want one. So, thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Al, al, we'll go have a cup of coffee. Really, what I'm interested in is the intersection between residential and capital projects ones, and how that matches up with data on, you know, what, when I buy a hybrid, am I relying on public infrastructure, or am I relying on home use? And then, does our capital projects, or, you know, what I'm calling capital projects, are ones where we're putting them in multifamily homes, apartment complexes, or off-site and stuff like that? Is that matching up with what people are buying, where they can leave their car all day, eight hours for a hybrid, to get a full charge back up? So sometime, I'll just catch up with you on that. And then, Free Trees. I want to talk about Free Trees. So I just found the push-out release, too. So is this currently only for private property?
Councilmember Jordan, yes. This pilot program is just for private property. We have a disclaimer on the site not to park it, or plant it in parkways or any public property at the moment. This is kind of like a--
So just a little nudge, I would tell you, you can't drive a street and see a parkway anywhere in the city where there used to be trees, and for whatever reason, there aren't trees. And I -- in single-family neighborhoods, I think, you could find tree sponsors or tree foster parents that could come -- because I know, you put a man out in the parkway, and then are people going to ignore them, and you wasted your money versus, it's on my property, and I see it as an asset to my property, and I take care of it. But I think there would be a real opportunity also to look towards trying to get some parkway trees back where we've historically lost them, for whatever reason. And you could find credible foster parents to baby those trees through the whatever, the five or 10 years until they're rowdy teenagers and ready to grow on their own kind of thing. So--
Councilmember Jordan, I'll take that one. So I love the fostering idea. We haven't thought of that yet, but we are currently working with the city's arborists and the Parks and Recreation Department to put trees in some abandoned tree wells, which tend to be in parkways. And so we have some funding in the upcoming fiscal year '26 budget to do that. There are public trees, because we are taking care of them as a city organization, are a lot more expensive, right? So this is looking to sort of multifacetedly address the 4,500 trees that the Climate Action Plan dictates us to plant. So some will be done in public settings that are more costly because we're using, you know, city staff to maintain them, and some will be done on private property.
I just, personally, I just think if you had other options, too, once they get embedded in that parkway, no matter who's taking care of them, I'm taking care, I'm foster parenting, or you're taking care of them, they are all of a sudden controlled by the pub -- by the city ordinances and stuff, and protected. I could take your tree, put it in my backyard, and not like it in five years, and just cut the thing down, and you've lost the asset and the resources that you put in there. And I just think there's a legacy, long-term benefit to looking for a way that you could get us, get people to participate at the same level out in the public area as they would in their private.
Next year's presentation will include Adopt a Tree.
I'll be cheerleading. The moment you come forward with that, I'll be your biggest cheerleader on that. So.
All right, very good. Any further -- great. We'll go to the next section, please.
And we just have two more sections, so thank you for bearing with us. A lot of good work happening.
Good afternoon. I'm Liz Smith. I'm the Community Engagement Supervisor in the Sustainability and Resilience Department. And our team gets the awesome task of promoting and supporting all of these programs that you've been hearing about. So we help with developing marketing campaigns and outreach efforts related to all of these projects and programs. We manage youth watershed education contracts through Explore Ecology that reach about 6,000 kids each year related to creek and ocean water protection and waste reduction, and that includes in-class presentations and field trips that are free to schools within the city. We also produce community events on behalf of the department, including our Sustainable Holidays Open House, our annual Creek Week Celebration, and the city's booth at the Earth Day Festival. And I will just add that we also produce our bimonthly newsletter that goes out to about 38,000 subscribers, and we manage our department website, as well as our department's social media accounts. So we are just really working to get information about all of these programs and projects out to the community in a variety of ways.
Greg, any questions about this? Ms. Sneddon.
You're tired of hearing my praise, but I've just really, you knock it out of the park with this community engagement, with the holiday part, and then the engagement at Earth Day. I mean, that was the booth, that was the place to be. And all the outreach you're doing, it's really, it's so festive and friendly and welcoming, and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, very good.
Last, but certainly not least, we have the waterfront.
Starts with a W. That's where you're always last, Mr. Lopez.
Mayor Rouse, City Councilmembers, my name is Nico Lopez, and I'm the Administrative Assistant for the Waterfront Department, and I'll be rounding out our presentation today, going over some of the waterfront programs that help to build community capacity, excuse me, for sustainable actions. So first, we have our Clean Marina Program. So this is a city council officially adopted program from 2002 that seeks to achieve and maintain best management practices and a clean harbor environment for people, aquatic life, and seabirds. And so this is our department's sort of all-encompassing program that's woven into pretty much all of our various operations. And there are six different areas of the Clean Marina Program: facilities for boaters, water quality monitoring, best management practices, pollution prevention and abatement, education and compliance and enforcement. So just two of these I want to highlight today. Number one, facilities for boaters. So we offer various recycling locations throughout the harbor where boaters can recycle materials, such as waste oil, bilge pads, marine batteries, and fishing line, all free of charge. And for number five there as well, education. So as part of this program, our staff does participate in outreach events, some of them you've heard today, such as Creek Week and Earth Day, to help spread awareness of our programs as well. One area of our Clean Marina Program that I want to emphasize is our Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. So this is an effort by staff to identify locations in the waterfront where stormwater accumulates and enters the ocean in the form of runoff. So once these spaces are identified, our staff ensures that these areas remain free of debris and materials that would otherwise end up in the ocean. So some of the efforts on our part include some timely lot sweeping of our various parking lots, as well as making sure some of our trash enclosures are completely enclosed. We do have a lot of community engagement and volunteer opportunities as well at the waterfront that support our sustainable goals. One of our big efforts here is Operation Clean Sweep. So this is a really great event. It's an annual volunteer seafloor cleanup event. We have volunteer and waterfront staff divers who remove debris from the harbor floor, and then dock volunteers as well, who help to take that debris and put it into a big bin, and we weigh it at the end. So it's a really great event. It underscores our commitment to ensuring a clean harbor environment, as well as a big community engagement opportunity. We just had our annual event two Saturdays ago, and it went really well. We ended up pulling about a little over a ton of debris from Marina One. So, very successful. And then we also have our annual Harbor Nautical Swap Meet. So this is another really great event that we host where vendors come out and they sell some of their used nautical equipment. It really provides an opportunity for some of these materials to have a second life, and it does promote the reuse of some of the nautical equipment. We collaborate with the Harbor Merchants Association on this one, and it's actually coming up this Saturday as well. So it's Saturday, the 17th, in our Harbor Main parking lot from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So I highly recommend you attend. If you've been searching for some nautical gear, there's always some great treasures that need a new home. And I do also want to point out, too, that Harbor Nautical Swap Meet in the morning at the harbor, and then the Fix-It Fair at the library in the afternoon could make for a really great, sustainable Saturday. We also have another annual volunteer event, which is our 5th of July Beach Cleanup. So this event takes place the day after the 4th of July, when we see a pretty large volume of visitors to our beaches. So we coordinate with Channel Keeper for this one to get volunteers out, to help remove some of that debris and litter that accumulates during the holiday. So in thinking about some of the debris that ends up on our beaches, a significant one that we see are vessels and boats themselves. So we also participate in the Surrendered and Abandoned Vessel Exchange Program, also known as the SAVE Program. We receive grant funding from the California Department of Boating and Waterways for this, and we utilize those funds for disposing of abandoned and surrendered vessels. And this really helps to keep these types of vessels out of our waterways and off our beaches when they've reached the end of their useful life, or they -- when they've been abandoned. And then finally, we have our Vessel Surrender Incentive Program. So this is an additional measure that the Waterfront Department has pushed forward in the last year to try to lower the amount of vessels that end up beached or abandoned. It's a collaboration with another local nonprofit called Heal the Ocean, where we jointly offer a direct $500 incentive to vessel owners who voluntarily turn in their boats. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Questions or comments for this section? I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. Number one, to Heal the Ocean, because I've been down there many sunrises with those guys when they -- when a boat does hit the beach, and they're first, along with Marburg, and do a tremendous job. And also Salty Dog Dive Service, who pays his guys a full day to go out and volunteer to do that harbor cleanup. So shout out to both those guys that do great work. And with that--
Got a question and comments, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my God, there's a voice from the past. Mr. Friedman.
Uh, thank you. So I actually saved the one question, and I'm sure you all missed this question during budget hearings, but maybe for Ms. Parento. How is all this paid for? I see a lot of grants and enterprise, but there's general fund departments. And if you could just give a general overview of what are the sources of funding for all these great programs?
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. Welcome back. Yes, I think it runs the gamut, right? As you mentioned, we have enterprise funds, we have general fund departments, and I think a lot of the general fund work is funded through grants. I would look at the library. And Parks and Rec does a lot of the work in-house as well, so their staff is doing tremendous work there. For the enterprise funds, some of it is funded through rates, some of it is funded through grants as well, and public private partnerships, as Mr. Furtner mentioned. And then, did I miss anything? No, I think that's about it. Yeah.
Thank you. That was, I just wanted to get a whole gamut of it, because it's such great work, and I'll just make a couple quick comments. There was quite a few people in my life right now who asked me if I really wanted to come back to council, because it might drive my blood pressure up. And I got to say that this was a really great reintroduction to council, to see all the great work we're doing here on the community. Every time we're talking about trees and beach cleanups and all these things, it lowers my blood pressure. So I really appreciate this first one, coming back out of this. But really, in all seriousness, thank you to all the staff today presenting the great work we're doing, to all the public that engages in all this, because this is where really the rubber meets the road, is the engagement that we have from the public. And then also to my colleagues on the council. It takes the leadership of the seven of us to put in the policies, and that's the directives for the departments to follow. So having a commitment from all of us and the community, it really, it really, we see the benefits of this on so many fronts. And lastly, just going back to what Councilmember Sneddon had said earlier in the presentation, was the name of this presentation, and the key word is "community," and it just really builds all these programs, are building community, they're building connections, friendships, and everything, and it's what makes Santa Barbara great. So just appreciate the opportunity to ease back into council on this, and look forward to coming back to chambers soon and being there with all you in person. But appreciate all this and great work, and thanks to all the community for your participation in these programs.
And, Mr. Friedman, all the agendas will be just like this in the future. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to thank staff. Great presentation, and we stand adjourned. Well, we did the, you've got more, they did the engagement thing before us, while we switched the agenda, you heard number four. But if you have something you'd like to say, oh, not yet, because we announced that before you guys.
It's so quick. I just, Councilmember Friedman, it is so wonderful to hear your voice and to have you in chambers with us, and we have really missed you. Welcome back.
All right, that was a good comment. Mr. Gutiérrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did just want to comment and give a shout-out in respect to a few community members that passed away since our last meeting. members that passed away since our last meeting. One of them is, is Luke Conklin, the son of Hal Conklin. He fortunately passed away from the same thing that took Hal, which was a, a brain tumor. Also, Phyllis Di Picchio, the, the founder of the International Film Festival, Danny Meza, a local muralist, Pedro Menchaca, his brother Jerry spoke earlier today, he was just a really great advocate for the community. And also Dennis Stoner, he passed away, yes, that is his real last name, we all would call him Stoner. He was just a great guy, and he passed away of colon cancer, and it's just a reminder that we got to check ourselves out, so, thank you.
All right, if there are no further comments or questions, we will adjourn. Thank you.